You got an action item and I'm sure a lot of other stuff.
Getting ready to want to move forward with the, you know, the pod remodel. So this is the contract with Russ Barrett to, you know, provide the furnishings and stuff for in there.
Do we have a cost? Do we have a?
It's on that.
Oh, did we get that?
Yeah, he sent it.
Sorry, I haven't looked.
Believe it's about sixty thousand dollars is what it is.
What did we have in your budget? Wasn't it forty or forty-five?
Thirty-eight something is what we were going with the cabinet maker.
Did you just send that this morning?
No, I think I got, well, I gave, I sent it to Gabby. I thought she was gonna send it out to you guys.
In the packet?
Uh, came as a separate one. They were added just after she.
Wednesday.
When, yeah, Wednesday at three fifty-seven.
Sixty-one thousand dollars and you said we had how much budgeted for it?
Thirty-eight.
That was one of the pilt payments for this last time that we.
And that's just for the furniture. That doesn't count the IT stuff or the flooring or anything else, right?
No, electrical and that's kind of hard to bid till we can get the floor pulled up and see just what's under there. So, um, you know, we're talking about, e- either way we do it, we're gonna have to relocate them to either booking or medical. You know, temporarily while we're working, yeah.
Jeremy, come on up. You gotta come to the mic.
Can I approach Doug? I don't, I don't know if for live streaming. You just started?
Uh, two minutes ago.
Just wanna make sure I can see it on there.
So we're good? So these are drawer pedestals and access panels. Is this the same style of furniture?
It's the same thing that was used up in, in dispatch. That's what it is. And basically, we need to have everything in place, new flooring, electrical, close to the vicinity's. They come set up the furniture and then, um, from that point, then IT's got, you know, does their thing. And stuff is basically what it is.
We're getting extra money in pilt this year.
Does this include like new chairs and all that stuff or this is just?
That's just their tabletops and, uh,
So Scott, what do you think? I mean, if you were to compile everything, are we at a hundred thousand? What are we at? No?
Yeah, I don't know, like, you know, cause we had to provide all the monitors and computer stuff. I'm not, I'm not sure what it would take for that. You know, electrical, um, cause I have, I've already had tried to stay out, kinda took them in there and showed them. You know, it's kinda hard for them because they can't see anything. Um, I think we just paid the bill for dispatch. Up there was like eleven thousand dollars, I think, but the vicinity there, the proximity there, I don't think it would be that, that involved. Um, I needed to get, I still haven't got anybody that can do computer flooring yet, so I'd like to be able to just take those out and replace them and not try and take them out and or I'll just kinda have to see if it's cheaper to take those actually out and if they can resurface them and put them back in, or if it's just better to get new drop-in panels and take those to the dump and drop new ones in. That's about, I think, all we really need to do, um, as far as on my end. Um, I don't know if we want to try and paint the room, you know, we can do that if we want to try and paint it while we have everything out of there.
Well, I'm assuming there's probably gonna be some expense to move the dis- or that, all that stuff now over to.
Yeah, there, I mean, that's.
There's gonna be some cost to that as well.
Any electrical, I don't know if we're gonna have to have, uh, anybody special come in for, to move them over there. Once we decide where.
You just put the wires across the floor and come with tape or something so that. That kinda what you're thinking?
Top or something?
Uh, networking already in the medical room. And then the computers in the booking area, they're already there, so they can already use those. And then LaCroy is gonna use an office back kinda by booking that already has a network drop in it. So really from IT's perspective, it's just moving everything out. They do their thing, put all the furniture in, then we gotta move everything back in.
As far as moving it back in, Jeremy, is that the new computers that you've already, um, budgeted for? Are those included in this or would this be a whole nother upgrade of their network or their computers in there?
No, we, we've moved the, um, if the new computers haven't come in by then, we would just move their existing computers back in.
But you've already budgeted for the new.
That includes all the sheriff stuff, all the, that's already covered.
Remember how much that was?
I think a hundred and sixty thousand was approved.
So this is gonna be, by the time we're done, it's gonna be two hundred and forty, fifty thousand dollars.
Oh, no.
One sixty, that's for every, every computer in the county.
Oh, 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 I thought you just meant over there.
All the.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's for everybody. The jail is included in that.
So Scott, that old panel that's on the south end where they look up at all the monitors, all that's coming out, is that correct?
Yeah, everything in there is gonna come out.
It's all gonna be more modernized stuff and?
Actually, in the pa- um, well, I have, I, I can send you the drawings for it if you wanna see what it looks like.
Let me see, let me open up the other one.
Got one, didn't we?
What?
Yeah, I got it.
I think we got it.
It shows the layout. It, yeah, that's it there. That's how it's gonna sit and then they'll have, are they gonna put additional monitors or anything, you know, in there? Just what they currently use? Stuff, so, yeah.
I would think you need to paint it while you've got everything out of there. It's only really one wall, isn't it?
Well, this, yeah, kinda, it's mostly windows, so it's basically just, just the lower kinda in the back, you know, the back is where they come in and stuff, so it wouldn't be too much. We can get it all cleared out in there and.
You know, it just seems like a lot of money to me, but I think it needs to be done, so I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion that we sign the contract with Russ Barrett for the jail pod furniture.
I'll second that.
Move in second. Any more discussion? Home favor, please say hi. Hi, motion carries. This is gonna be great, man. Everything's gonna be all up to date, all through that whole area over there. Perfect. That's a great way to leave it. Um, anything else?
Yeah, just the kinda things we've been doing, we're gonna do, or we did, we have replaced all the, there's a couple of dry heads up at the annex. There are actually fire sprinkler heads that are out on out entries. We replaced those last week. That came up in our five-year inspection, which I guess the five-year inspection's been around, fire inspection, but it just was nothing that the state enforced and we, they started to, so this year we had to go through and it's an additional inspection we have other than our annual one. They actually came to each site, took the pipes apart, looked inside them, um, everything else, and they found it. Those dryheads are supposed to be changed every ten years and they've never been changed, so. Um, working on that. Transfer site, uh, we had scale issues last week. We lost a load cell again up there. Um, so we had to have them come, they came up and, uh, actually it was load cell and the communication wire to it. I'd, we'd had the problem a week before and I was able to get it working again, but this time I couldn't get it going, so. We keep a load cell on hand at all times, so they just come up and swap it out, order a new one for us and, um, there's six on it. They're all original. We've done two of the six now, so, um, had that happen to us. We're gonna, um, replace all the exhaust fans on the tipping floor, uh, Wednesday up there and get those all functional and maintain them this time.
Hopefully it'll be a nice warm day.
Yeah. Um, got a boiler inspection on eleventh of this month. Um, getting, getting the materials together to pour our pad up there, cause we took that on to save us cost on the, uh, uh, installation of the new backup boiler. Um, working on stuff for Worm Lake Transfer Site. I'm gonna have to get letters out to the sixty-four property owners. Um, and let them know that it's gonna be locked, why it's locked. And we're gonna have to arrange with someone, I don't know, Grant or someone to go out and clean up and haul off all the debris or the block, the bricks, um, do something about pile swell and, uh, get it, uh, back, uh, how the Forest Service wants it.
You know, I was thinking, and correct me if I'm wrong, but couldn't Lake Shore pick up those regi- those cans out there at each residence like they do for us and just do away with that whole site? I mean, what, why wasn't that ever done in the past? I don't know.
You know, I, I don't know what, you know, why they set up that transfer site for them out there.
Just make a route like they have here.
Probably like, because there's so many seasonal residences, you know, it would be hard for them to.
Yeah, and in the winter, I don't know how many people use their place. They can't, they, you know, we shut the site down in the winter, so they've gotta haul it out themselves. Um, in the winter, I don't know how many people use their places back there in the winter, um.
But I mean, if they're there in the summer, they could get the green cans and roll them out to their driveway and Lake Shore could just go out there with a truck and pick them up and we wouldn't need that.
Yeah, well, I guess we'd have to talk with Scott and see if, you know, they'd set up a route out there.
Commercial people are gonna have to get their own dumpsters this year.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're supposed to unless, you know, someone feels sorry for and gives them a key to the place or something, you know.
What I'm wondering is, and I don't, you know, I haven't talked to anybody about, but maybe what we need to do is in these letters is saying this is kind of the last chance, kind of a deal.
Definitely, um, you know, cause we operate that under a conditional use permit with the Forest Service, and if they're not happy with the conditions, they're gonna revoke our permit and it will be, we have no choice. It'll just be shut down. You know, the bins will be hauled off and I don't know about the building before we required to take the building down or what, but, um, if it can, if conditions continue the way they are out there, there's a good chance they'll just say, close it.
So what might pass, and I'll do it if you want me to, is to ca- talk with Scott of Lake Shore to say, what's it gonna take for you guys to set up just a normal collection system out there in the summer months?
Yeah.
And we'll do away with that. Site altogether.
Yeah, cause like I say, they, I met with the young gal, I have her name. Uh, she's in charge of conditional work permits and it was the gentleman that was kinda the interim head of the Forest Service Department this summer here out there and, you know, if, you know, conditions continue the way they are. You know, we had people, someone was clearing lots out there and he was bringing all his, you know, trees and stumps and, um, out there, um, and it's, again, it's just for their household solid waste and for whatever they rake up and clean up in their yards. It's not meant for lot clearing and we had, it's like old chicken coops and buildings, um. I think we've talked about this in the past. We're, I think we're getting people from on the Saturday or Sunday, hey, let's, you know, take a drive into country and throw our old dishwasher out there or couch. So, um, uh, actually I've been explaining to them, you know, if the conditions continue the way they are, they're gonna have to haul it themselves or make arrangements with Lake Shore.
Well, and I think we're coming to that. I bet we'll see more abuse this year and we're gonna have to come to that point.
We're gonna put a sign up at the gate, you know, and explain the use of it and like I say, see what happens. Cause we're getting a lot of recreationalists out there that, you know, said, take it home. They, there's no longer this pack it in, pack it out mentality. It's, you know, we had a lot of trouble in Garden Valley when I lived there with the dumpster at the Chevron Station. Kayakers stuff pull around behind the building and throw all their stuff in their, in their dumpsters instead of taking it home or pack it in the trash cans out by the pumps, um.
What about doing a camera up there? And just put surveillance?
There's no electricity.
Yeah, it's out there. I don't know if we could do something on a solar type system or?
Card though.
What's that?
Oh, I said if you did a camera like that, then you'd have to drive out and swap out the cards like a game cam style.
Yeah, like, you know, I don't know. I had to talk with someone that kinda works in security or something. I don't know if we could do something that operates off a solar panel out there. Um, what I'm afraid is somebody will shoot it, you know, we'll just, you know, get back out of sight and blow it off a tree or the post or.
Yeah.
Whatever, um, will happen to it, but.
I mean, even if we had it for thirty days, you're gonna find the bad actors pretty quickly.
Yeah.
You know, if you can get in on a license plate and give somebody a huge.
Yeah, and it's really hard to get a good camera that's solar powered that will actually zoom in on a license plate.
Yeah, and then I don't, you know, if it's something that will record or it would be something that's capable of sending it to us. Yeah, so it's more like a trail cam, something, something we'd have to probably go out. And we might look at, you know, go online and get some cheap trail cam cameras and mount them out there and see if they'll survive well enough, um, to, uh, get some.
You know, Idaho County, Idaho County has dumpsters all along the highway and they've got them in a chain link fenced area that anybody can stop and throw their trash in, which I think is probably something that we're gonna come to in some of these remote areas. But the issue I have is the wind gets over them and there is trash all up and down that river that blows out of those dumpsters.
Yeah.
It's a mess.
One in Seash last year, I went up there and it was a mess.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we were probably gonna have the same issue up there if it's on Forest Service ground.
Yeah. Yeah. It is hard. It's just, uh, the mentality has really changed about, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, like I say, when I was growing up, it was always you pack it in, you pack it out and I did, I worked with a packer and guide in the back country with, and it's just, um, it's changed. It's, they don't wanna take it home. I mean, I caught a guy out here trying to throw it in the share or the, over here last summer. You know, he lived in Utah. He didn't wanna take his trash home or leave it at the Airbnb he was at or whatever, you know. Got all ignorant with me, so.
They do, they get pretty, I had the same issue when my cross-country ski deal all the time, or they put it in the outhouse.
Yeah, outhouses are, they have Forest Service sites that all the time.
And it's like now somebody's gotta dig that out.
Oh, that's crazy.
So, um, that's kinda there. Um, Dave, you said you had some information from the Forest Service, you know, cause we're at the deal with the C and D pile. Could you forward that to me or whatever you got?
It's still ongoing. I think what we're looking at right now for that, uh, pile is, I, I put on my list for following up with them tomorrow is, I think we're gonna probably need to get a quote from, uh, Ico if we wanna ch- chip it, otherwise we're probably looking at hauling it in pieces as is out to Tamarack Mill. They said they would take it over there because they have a chipper.
They just, they just need to get it there, so.
But it's gonna, I was gonna say, it's gonna be so much trucking to get that in the state that it's in right now, so it seems like, you know, even if we have to pay for the chipping, it's gonna end up probably saving us some money.
Yeah. We've gotta get it in a, a form. We'll have to talk with Scott that he can haul it or he's gonna have to subcontract it out and then we'll have to worry about paying for that.
I think if we consider that, the trucks, the trucks they're using now won't haul it.
Yeah.
Those walking floor trucks won't work, so they're gonna have to get a side dump, belly dump trucks.
Yeah.
With an excavator to kinda break that up and really pack it in those trucks, but.
We're gonna go with those type trucks. Get a bid from Ico and make sure you get a bid on the trucking as well, cause that's where we paid. We, we thought the chipping was only gonna be like thirty-five thousand and then we found out that that didn't include trucking. Get it over there, so.
And is this like a short-term solution or a long-term solution? Cause
Well.
It's, it's like the short term, you can pay a hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year, but, you know, the long term, you can pay off a piece of equipment.
Well, and that's, that's the conversation I've been having with the Forest Service folks, the regional offices. There might be money available for us to purchase a chipper. I asked Scott Carnes to just start thinking about and, you know, I told him, hey, we're certainly not prioritizing this in the next couple of months, but
Yeah.
Just to start thinking about what it would look like for his operation if they had to include the chipping or the hauling, either option. As long as we get it to Tamarack Mill, they'll take all the, all the debris that we can send over there.
Okay. We just gotta get it there is what we're looking.
Yeah.
And keep in the back of your mind that the way the contract reads Lake Shore, whatever it costs, they get another fifteen percent of that. So they're not really in it to save money. It's just whatever it costs and they'll get it done, so.
Maybe we need to, you know, carve out that part of the contract and have a discussion about that.
That was the other thing I asked him is I said, what would that do to our contract right now? And he said he would start looking into that as well. So, it's kind of in his hands right now as far as time schedule or his timing goes. Start getting some of that information.
And that's just hard to load with a loader, even if they have a side or a, a long end dump or something.
Yeah, he can't, he can't.
It's gonna have a, it's easy to do it with a, an excavator with a, you know, a claw on the end of it.
That was the other thing that I heard from, um, the Tamarack Mill folks is even with the grinder or the chipper grinder that they have over there is that if there are large, uh, brackets, you know, on big beams, not like little, you know, not like the little hurricane, hurricane ties.
Yeah.
Big brackets or if there's any, um, posts that have concrete on them, that, that, that has to get separated out.
I see the flat sheet metal like, yeah, cause of all the plates they use for, uh, kinda the fake timber framing and stuff that, you know, or quarter inch thick and stuff. I can see that. I was wondering about spikes and stuff for their, tear down a log house, it spiked together, but I guess they can handle that.
See, they didn't seem to have a problem with that, kinda like the fasteners. It was just like the really big bracket.
Big flat plate metal and stuff. Okay.
We need to kinda think about how we're gonna do this next summer when we start getting more of that back in. Do we need to have policy that you can't have any steel on it?
Yeah.
You know, those have gotta be any concrete on the post. All that's gotta be taken over and put in.
Yeah, I mean, the concrete's gotta be sawed off and take to the concrete pile and, uh.
It's gonna look like we had a pretty easy agenda going for next week and Scott said Carnes that he would be more than willing to come in and chat with us about that. I don't know if he's at a point where we could maybe get him on the agenda next week to start talking about it, because we are getting down to the wire.
Yeah, cause we got no place to put it. We got, that's the whole reason about burning it, making space for next years and that's what I kinda approached the guy from DEQ. We were allowed to collect this year with the assumption we could burn it. Let's make the exception, let us burn it this year. And he said, no, he wouldn't, he wouldn't go for that.
What about the woody debris that burned up the others? That's still?
It kinda comes and goes. It, not last this weekend with the weekend before, Sunday, it kinda spot caught and took off again and things, um.
But there's still a lot left.
I have to go look at it. I haven't, I haven't been up there. I wasn't up there last week. I should've probably ran up there when I was, uh, there, but I other things on my mind, so, um, need to look at that and see what it's doing. But, you know, Scott said it takes quite a while for that to burn, especially the massive load we have this year.
Well, I'll tell him and talk to him about Worm Lake. You guys can work on that, on the woody debris and the construction stuff and we'll see what we can do.
Yeah. If we can, um.
Otherwise, we may have postponed that pro- whole program next summer if we can't get rid of it. And I hate to do that, cause then they'll be burning back in their backyard again, which is.
Well, you know, we, we can burn the, the woody debris stuff. That's not a problem.
Construction.
It's just like the C and D, the construction. Um, and stuff. I was always kinda wondering why we're burning it, cause I knew from Boise County, they weren't allowed to burn it there cause of the the glues and laminates and stuff was their concern. It wasn't the, the dimensional wood. It was the laminated, you know, the wafer board, all the, all the, um, stuff that's glued, is what they were concerned about. Things.
Well, and I think if we can't find a place to go with the construction, we'll have to just start taking it up to the MRF and hauling it along with the rest. Yeah, I don't know what else to do.
Then we'd have to really, you know, we've already talked about the commercial and residential mixed trash, cause they're coming in with, you know, with dump trucks. We don't allow any long dumps, but the dump trucks can dump in there and they're coming in with dimensional wood, beams, posts that are, you know, we're, we're gonna get signage up. They got to be six footer or shorter, cause they're getting them big long beams. If, uh, Eric can't break them with the hoe in there or with the track hoe, then they're end up jammed up in their trucks and they're having to come clear back from Clay Peak and trying to get it out here and, um, so. And I was up there, they, we did the lights last week and they dumped a roll off from Tamarack and it was full of concrete and stuff in it, um, on the tipping floor. That's all supposed to be separated out. And there was also a big four-inch Ames backflow preventer, big old piece of steel in there. Should've gone to the metal pile, but, uh, you know, out there, the construction, they don't care. They're just throwing it in the dumpsters.
So are we finding them when you, you know, when you find that kinda stuff, what is our avenue moving forward?
I don't know if we have a, uh, anything set up to find them, to be quite honest. I'd have to look into that. I don't.
Oh, we're, we're weighing it and charging them partly by.
Or they're getting charged, yeah, they're paying for it going in there, but it's just, you know, it's hard on his trucks, um, um, and stuff, so it's, uh.
Sounds like we need to pull that ordinance and look at all of it and make sure that.
Well, in the old days. Get that covered, covered load ordinance back in there too, cause it, we have a covered load ordinance, I think, but it's, I, I, I can't, I couldn't find any reference to it. It says it on the sign going into the transfer site. It, it, as far as I could tell, it doesn't exist.
Really like to try to keep all the block and concrete and stuff off the floor out there.
Yeah, I know the old days they would take that front end loader and they would load the bucket with that concrete and haul it up there. Same thing with the big piece of steel.
Yeah, you know, I said, I was talking with Summer and Nikki and they said, yeah, that's what, you know, Eric would do if they came across, you know, someone dumped a bunch of it. They'd load it up, but you know, how things got last year when it got so hectic, um, they just don't, you know, seem to have the time to do it anymore.
It's gonna get more hectic every year, cause there's just more people here.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I often wonder if it's not a lack of personnel on Lake Shore side. I mean, they need three guys up there, watch, one to watch.
That's what we kinda just had discussed with them, that they'd keep three people up there at all times, um. I don't know so much in the winter right now, you know, cause they don't have to go up and push the, the woody debris and, and, but it's in the summer. Um, I thought when I first came here and was, you know, as, as a contractor going up, there was, you know, three people up there, but, um, uh, we can't have it repeated next, last, last summer. Um, we need to look into, if, if the trash ends up a huge mountain that destroyed, you know, that's what damaged one of the exhaust fans. Pile got so high, got pushed into it. Um, just the actual conditions up there, um. We have to maybe look at legal recourse or something if they can't maintain it up there.
Well, it's kinda violation of the contract and we'd have to get Oak, I think, involved, but let me talk to Scott, like I said, and I'll bring it up about, he needs more help up there. See if we can't do a better job with that, cause this is destroying the facility.
Well, I think, you know, when we met with his, with, with Scott's, you know, we all met out there with Oki and Dave and, and Chris and that's, you know, was discussed that they would, you know, ma- you know, have additional personnel and they were going through the steps of trying to increase wages, trying to attract people to, so that they could, you know, could do that and stuff. It's like anybody else up here. First, if a person doesn't have a place to live, they can't hire them to begin with. They come up here and say, oh, I like the job. Where are you gonna live? Um, so, um.
Arguing just like the rest of us.
In their defense, they had already done two pay increases last year. I mean, they, they're trying.
Yeah. And a lot of, it's, uh, a lot of work people wanna do. They've had quite a bit of turnover and stuff too. It's just, you know, not a lot of people wanna work in solid waste. That's some.
Or not a lot of people wanna work, period.
I mean, I, I totally agree.
We have about ten minutes left, so you and Elton talked this week. We're gonna have a campus planning committee on Wednesday. And you guys have walked through the old Y cap building and I'd, I'd like an update on that. Are you gonna have some recommendations for that committee?
Well, I was, I was, I was hoping to have a, an actual bid for you today. Um, I had a contractor, was supposed to show up on Friday, um, but he got sick. Um, he's actually the guy that painted all this here, last year. He does a lot of work for the medical center up there and stuff. He was gonna come up Friday and then got sick, um, so I'm waiting to hear from him. And then, um, Brent from, Leslie from Castle Mount Homes is gonna come by. Um, Rick, uh, Coram, the tri-state supervisor is gonna come by and look at the electrical for me. And, uh, just see what we're looking at. Um, I mean, the way it's set up in there, the way you come in, it's almost kinda already set up for receptions to sit there. Uh, best office is, making it real nice office for Melissa or somebody in there. I think with, um, with like the Herman Miller dividers, the other two areas out there could be divided up into offices. And if they need a conference room, the back room, put a conference table in there and they could be set up to have a conference room. I think she's kinda looking at, she'd like to have a kitchen that's got a big kitchen in it. I mean, it could, if, I don't know what they do, if they do classes or what's involved, um, but it could be turned into a learning center in there too, if they do anything with the four H or anything along that line, so.
The reason why I kinda got interested in it again was because the fact that we're running out of time finding a spot for extension and all those folks now. I don't think we can build something in the six months we got left. And I went and looked at the building with Scott and it's got grain foundation, it's got ADA excess, it's got, all the IT stuff is in it. It's even got security cameras on the outside and my feeling is I would rather spend, I don't know, eighty or a hundred thousand dollars and re model it and clean it up, modernize it with, that's new fixtures, new water heaters, new, you know, stuff in the kitchen. And we could get that done in the time we got.
Yeah.
And then move extension and, cause the other thing to think about, and I've been worried about it, is Department of Labor. And they're coming in, I think they're going over to EOC now, I think. But if, if the economy tanks, we get a lot of unemployed people, we're gonna have lines to see Department of Labor unemployment stuff, so I think we should make a spot for them one day a week in there as well. And I would rather fix that up than to spend three or four or five hundred thousand dollars on another building and we, this one has good bones and it can be re- redone. It's got a good roof.
Yeah, without them in there going through, I mean, it is a sound building, um.
That's good to know.
Sure why, what?
We thought it was a teardown. We'd just been told.
That was Pat, wasn't it?
Yeah, well, he had a, wasn't Pat. It was a contractor that was in there, so that's.
Um, I mean, it's, it's a sa- it's a very sound building. I just, you know, I'm kinda wonder why it got to the, why it was let go to the shape it got in. Guys, I talked to another gentleman, it's been a good friend of mine, he's on the Caldwell Night Rodeo Board there and talked to him how they ran things and. They're, the, they're, they're totally responsible for everything there. The county, it's city property, actually, no one helps them with it, but it's also a very profitable. I mean, you know, function, but they are in charge of getting stuff fixed, repaired, um.
When you say they, you mean the county?
The, no, the, the fair board, the rodeo fair and rodeo board is, it's not up to, it's actually city property. Um, but they, um, it's not up there, it's totally on them, but they also have extremely profitable rodeo. Where we, we don't, um, and that's, I'm kinda wondering why. I'd look at the condition of the holding pens and stuff, how they got that way. I mean, to me, Fair and Rodeo Board hasn't been doing their job. Me, I mean, uh, even, even letting the county know this needs to be done or what, I don't, I don't know, I've. I mean, the arena's in good shape, but once you get outside the arena, it's, I mean, the holding pens down near the. The gates, the fences, everything's held together with, you know, baleen twine and, and.
I think that's a greater conversation. I. I, I think it's a, maybe a little bit of apples and oranges what's happening because, yeah, I mean, the Caldwell Night Rodeo is a huge event. And that is something that, you know, I think, I think this fair and rodeo would love to have. You know, that kinda thing, and I, I think the conversation has just been who pays for what, and no one's solidified that in the past. If you look at state statute, we're responsible. It's not the fair board.
Yeah, I wanna, you know, I wanna talk to Gem County cuz they do the combination fair and rodeo. And talk to the people at Cambridge there with their grounds and how they funded their structure that they have.
Inbridge had a fire. I already called them. They had a fire and got some insurance money and then had one of the locals donate the rest of it. So theirs was.
Yeah, I think that's kind of a separate issue from the Y cap building, but I.
Yeah, I've just, you know, getting down there and, and, you know, we're, cuz we're talking about putting a trailer on the end down there and you're putting more vehicles in Jeff's way with. Equipment moving around and parking and then what are they gonna do while the function's going on, um. It's, um, uh, but yeah, I said, I'll get some, uh, as soon as I get bids. And, and more information on the Y cap building, I'll, I'll get that to you guys.
I think, um, you guys, you probably can't look at the roof. I think it's gonna need a new roof and it needs new siding.
Actually, the roof is in pretty good shape, but the siding and windows. Are gonna have to be either redone or covered or with new siding or definitely new windows, I think, um. But you go in and walk in, the floor's pretty level all through it. It's not sinking, it's not rotting anywhere, but, um.
That's great.
And then if we someday, if we get the county shops out of there and we, we move extension, all that down there, then we can use this for an office or something else. Whether it be.
Great, if we can save it, that's the best investment of our dollars.
I'm just thinking of the timeframe. We don't have, I'm afraid to get all this done.
The, well, the contract didn't show up. Jaime, you know, he's a painter, so he can take a look at that and say, yeah, I can clean, I can save that siding or. I can, you know, it needs to be tore off and redone, so, um.
I know what they did, like, my house had the same siding. It's an old building. They came in and covered the OSB, the whole outside in Tyvek. And then recited it with, uh, steel coated vinyl siding or vinyl coated steel siding. Not vinyl siding, but it was a steel, something would sink in the sun and, and, but you gotta frame in for the new windows. I mean, it's gonna take some work. But I still think that's the cheapest, quickest way to get an office space for them.
If we could have that for the campus planning committee then, so we can, you know, give them, cuz we gave them, we gave them the responsibility. To go and try and find some.
Well, we talked about that was a teardown.
Campus planning in this Wednesday?
The other thing, Scott, um, to think about is I would like you, request you to do another mold test. Down in the lower room, once IT is out, maybe two or three tests in there because I know we're gonna have. That issue with some people that wanna move back in there. And let's make sure we get a good, clean test before we.
Well, and we had talked about putting extension down there. I mean, it's an easy in and out, out of the front of the building and that would also be available.
See, they would all have to come through security. All those people have to come through security. And then, like I said, I'm concerned when we get, you know, back to four, five, six, eight percent unemployment.
I think they're using one office by the elevator up there, um.
Department of Labor is doing EOC.
Have they gone over there and using that now? Okay.
Um, they're doing almost everything online now, though. I mean, they don't, when Julie left, they don't, they didn't replace her up here. So I don't even know if they have anybody.
I didn't know she left.
I don't think they have anybody right now. I think the people that are coming up are coming up remote.
Yeah, I think everybody's, I think everything's online. I think everything.
But we still need extension and 4H and, and soil conservation maybe could move in there too. And that gives us another house remodel or your office, you know, there's a lot of things here and, and. Bring it up during campus planning and then if, like I say, if you could go ahead and get a mold test done. When those guys move out down below, just make sure we're good and clean there.
We've got most, we've got most everything out except for two of the desks that they wanted to keep. Up there that raise up and down, I guess they wanna use them for, you know, working on their computers, so. Um, only thing left is the power and data pole in the center of the room. Um, and Jeremy's working on that, so once that's up, we got a couple of file cabinets and we can start carpeting. Um, they just really painted in there not too long ago, so it's, uh. And actually, one of the color, the colors they used up there, I wouldn't mind, uh, if you guys get a chance to look at them, to use them for when we do the, in, in here.
I'd like to go look. Last time we were up there, it was like dark blue or some dark.
Well, it's almost like, it's a real light blue on, on the east and west walls. The back one's kinda got a gray with like a. Like a blue tint to it, which I think it's actually a really nice color, um. Uh, so, uh, cuz looking at color ideas, cuz.
Whatever we do, we gotta keep it light. This building is so old that you gotta keep it pretty light.
Well, that's what I like, kinda like about that color in the back. It's kinda, it is light and it's just kinda got some energy. Someone's got some energy to it or something. It's just doesn't, you know. Um, we're looking at, I kinda like, like I say, the, it's the south wall, actually, northbound south walls, it kinda did accent walls on each. Um, the, the color on the back of that one, I really like, so.
What I like is different colors. Not the whole room the same color, but maybe an accent wall on one side and the rest of it. I like that, kinda breaks it up, but that's your call. You're the buildings and grounds guys, so.
So everybody's got an opinion on the colors.
Yeah, yeah, a thousand different opinions.
And if you don't wanna be the bad guy, you just bring us three and let us be the bad people.
I have no trouble being the bad guy.
I have no problem with that.
Anything else?
Nope, I think that's it.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thanks for your help. Hey, is, oh, Jeff's here. I didn't even see him back there. Run bridge, Mr. McSiden.
Need a break?
Nope, we're good. You have some action items? You have whatever you wanna do first.
Let's do these, this action item for the EDA.
Amendment to Abstein Bridge?
All for the Abstein Bridge. We're moving into the construction phase now. Um, sounds like we've secured. Funding through the EDA for the construction side of the world. It's gonna cost more money to us, but we've gone this far. We just need to finish it, in my opinion. And I've, I, we can, I've got the money to budget for this when the time comes, so.
So Doug, we have an amendment to the EDA and then we have the actual request.
This is what needs to be signed right here, these, these two.
That's what we've got here.
Whichever one you wanna sign.
So the first one is, well, here, you guys can look at them.
Should've been in your packets, I'm not sure.
We're gonna. An additional eight hundred thousand from the EDA, and then we're gonna match with two hundred thousand.
The way I understand it, yes.
And then this letter basically asks for that two hundred thousand.
I don't know when my name became mopping.
I noticed that.
I have been mopping most of my life.
I can get that changed, Commissioner.
I'm just gonna mark it out. I don't care.
So I need a motion to approve both of these?
I moved to approve the eight hundred thousand dollar construction cross grant. And providing a twenty percent match for two hundred thousand dollars toward the construction cost.
Oh, second.
Moving in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So Doug, do you wanna reprint this one out, fix Jerry's name or do you want us to sign this one?
I just crossed it out. It doesn't matter to me at all. My name used to be Mop and Glow, back in the day when there was Mop and Glow. Mop and Glow, the old. The old stuff that you put on the floor.
Somebody can never say my name. It just. Gets murdered all the time. Is he fading? He's fading away.
I'm so excited about.
What'd you lose?
So on the LTAC stuff, Jeff, that we were looking at and all of bridge money that's out there. I heard that we have six bridges that will qualify. Is that correct? Is Abstein one of them? Three?
Some of them aren't bridges, they're multiple culverts.
No, I didn't get the help to sign that.
Mary, starting the process on that. We'll sit down and figure out how much everything's, what we're gonna be looking for.
Okay, um, and then also on those fish passages.
Ah, yes, please.
I heard that.
Take him down to my office, get him scanned.
It came out that we could get funding from NRCS or Soil and Water was gonna.
Yes, that was, that was the meeting I started last Monday, but I had to come in here and I missed most of it, but it was mainly to deal with farmers and.
So that's three nineteen money?
No, it's a.
No?
No.
It's another program?
This is another, they got, they got a big lump of money. The United States Road Reclamation, I guess, is what it is. And they, uh. It, it's all for clean water. Kind of a part of the Clean Water Act is what I get to, to trying to clean this reservoir up. Or lake or whatever you wanna call it.
So a fish passage is the bottomless covert, isn't it?
Well, it can be bottomless or it can be an oversized covert. That is actually sunk in the ground a foot deeper than a regular covert and then let the nat- natural. Rocks and gravels and stuff kinda flow through it and it kinda makes a natural bottom for them.
Those, those are, what, what's a four foot covert now? Two hundred dollars a foot?
Um, I just ordered a. I think it was a six. Six foot covert squash to. Fifty-four by seventy-six or something for Quinzer Creek as part of a three nineteen grant on West Mountain. And it was, it was seventeen thousand, almost eighteen thousand dollars. It came to about three hundred and twenty-nine dollars a foot.
What are the two that we need to put on West Mountain out there right now? What are the two drainages they set on?
Rock Creek and Poison Creek.
Oh, really?
That's, that's in that section that we're gonna get Tamarack's help.
That's why I was Rock Creek, but it surprises me that Poison's in there.
Poison's actually the bigger than Rock Creek. Poison's the second one. That's the one the beavers like to plug my covert up. But the road's thirty-six feet wide and the covert's twenty-eight feet wide, so you got.
So the new culverts will be obviously.
New covert will probably be forty-eight feet long.
We don't wanna request anybody do anything there until we get those done.
Pretty much. I've talked to. So Granite has called, apparently Tamarack's got ahold of them for a bid to rebuild that road from the roundabout out to. Blue Mountain or whatever it's called out there.
Good.
It's gonna call for a full section, which is base rock, crushed pavement. Thirty-six feet wide or thirty-two feet wide, whatever it is, and. So I really don't wanna do anything until those two culverts are done, but they can come back in and. Get a good contractor. They can make it to where there's not a bump, but either way, the road's gonna have to be closed now because that's.
Can we supply the covert and let Josh put it in? Can we supply the covert and have Josh put them in?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, but that all depends on what the National Fisheries People say if they want a bottomless, which.
Oh, you're still waiting to see.
Which requires over excavating and putting the concrete abutments in the ground and bolting the covert together and. Depends on who, who's who and.
So with all this money that's coming right now on the infrastructure side of things, do you have Mary working on specific items or what?
Those three bridges, um, are list of roads, that main priority roads. It sounds like we might be able to get more of this West Mountain. Done under that USBR money, cuz it's all drainage related. If we can keep the dust down, if we can put new culverts in, if we can. A lot of different. Options on that money, I guess, from what I, I was only sitting in there for a couple hours and I.
Was Mary there or?
Mary was not.
Oh, bummer.
Yeah, so I'm not sure. Dorina was not heading it up, but. You know, talking about getting the trout back up Gold Fork. Getting rid of this, getting rid of that. Oh, yeah, it was kinda over my head stuff, but it sounds like anything, anything to do with clean water. So if I got culverts up Gold Fork or culverts up Patty Flat or. Wherever, anything that drains into the reservoir out here is available for some kind of funding, sounds like.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, but it seems to me like this new group that's gonna do the whole pit, watershed down to banks. Anything that's below the reservoir is gonna qualify too. For example, when years back, they converted a lot of subirrigation to pivots, but you had to be above the lake. Now the stuff below the lake will qualify as well for that same program. I don't know, maybe Ken, you know, I, I.
Yeah, I haven't heard that one yet.
You know, I was always envious cuz you guys got all this cost share for these pivots and I'm still on my own down here at the other end.
He knows how to get into the money pot, though.
All Dorina.
All Dorina, yeah. That's what I thought. Another question, Jeff, I wanted to ask you, cuz I think we're gonna be looking at them, is going up Clear Creek. Are those, is that, that's a county road through there and there's three. Single lane bridges there.
Three, nine.
Well, the three that I deal with, I should say, yeah, there's more than that.
One, two, three, I think there's six.
And I think some of them are so narrow, they have a hard time going on them with a groomer because groomer's almost too wide.
The whole road's, the whole road's only sixteen feet wide. These bridges are sixteen feet wide.
And I think it's something we need to keep in back of our mind. If we develop Clear Creek and we end up doing a whole new grooming program to Worm Lake, we're gonna have to come back in and. Look at that road as well for summer use.
Yeah, most of those bridges aren't even on our inspection.
No, they're wooden bridges.
Well, it doesn't matter. They're under twenty feet long.
Well, is that how you get out of that?
That's how ITD, anything over twenty feet wide, and that includes. If I got four culverts that are over twenty feet wide, the total span of them, that's part of my, that's a bridge.
So do you think on those bridges there, could you come in with two six foot squash pipe and replace that bridge?
No, it'd be better to put bridges in.
Cuz that gets a lot of water certain times of the year.
Be better just to stay with the sixteen foot wide Big R Bridge. You're not gonna be much wider than what's already there.
Well, I would think we'd have to widen them cuz you can't, you can't get two cars across at the same time. I know that.
You can't get two cars across all the. Bridges in the back country, down Johnson Creek, Uplit Creek, they're all sixteen foot wide.
However, this is a big residential area now.
Yeah, that's certainly the other thing. If DF starts chugging off ground here and selling or subdividing up there, we can get them to help. At least put the road back, but I don't know about these bridges.
I would hold them to the bridges too.
We could try.
As I, who knows if they're weighted for a hundred and logging trucks go across them, but they, they run a. Sixty foot long span on their axles where a loaded concrete truck's gonna do more damage than a eighty-six thousand pound. Concrete truck's gonna do more damage than a hundred and five thousand pound logging truck.
Yeah, and I don't know what they're planning on logging up through this year, but I bet they do quite a bit. It's, that's a, that's an area that's just ripe for all kinds of.
It's already pretty butchered up there. There's not a whole lot left, I don't think.
A lot left of what?
Logs. Up, up higher, but on the private ground, I don't, they've pretty well hammered it pretty hard last few years.
They, potlatch skin is pretty hard for they sell.
Potlatch came in and then DF's went in and got the rest of what was, what latch had left and. Pretty bare enough there, but.
Well, and in my opinion, sometime this summer, go up and kinda look at that, drive that and see, because I think. Well, and in my opinion, sometime this summer, go up and kinda look at that, drive that and see, because I think, say, that's a ripe area for a lot of expansion for recreation and all that stuff, so we could spread a lot of people out there.
Yeah.
I know, we've been talking about getting a groomer for that area. They sent it out of Warm Lake, and then come into Clear Creek, and go on into Yellow Pine and all that stuff, so.
I mean, those bridges out there aren't any wider or narrower than the ones going down Johnson Creek, and the groomer goes down there. It's, yeah, it'd be nice to have a thirty-foot-wide bridge for a groomer to go across, but they used to run them across twelve-foot bridges up around this lake.
Ken, you got anything else?
We're just waiting for stuff to thaw out. See, we're starting to get a mess out here, and this ice dam out here's starting to break apart right now, and there's some pretty good-sized holes in it, so-
There is water coming up everywhere out there.
It was running down the highway, I'm surprised ITD doesn't say something about it, 'cause it's going out in the highway and making ice slicks out there, and-
These days, we're gonna come in, it's just gonna be-
It's, well, it's been hollow out here, water's been running under it all winter, so as soon as we start getting a little more thawing, that's, that's when the big holes will come out.
Mm-hmm.
Um, other than that, we're just kinda still pushing stuff back, trying to get the edge of our roads exposed, and getting water off the road.
Get farm-to-market cleaned up. I watched the, the road advisory meeting, so, which, by the way, we did approve you doing three days back in the back country, or three times the back country.
On Johnson Creek only. Johnson Creek only. Don't say the back country. It's Johnson Creek, that's the only one we agreed to do three times a year.
Yeah, we couldn't have, we'd have to have ten more guys to go back there and do all that three times.
Only Johnson Creek.
We wouldn't have enough help to even get close to that. Hey, anything else?
Look a little closer, it was just Johnson Creek.
I'm gonna go back and re, relook at what we, what we did, what we voted on, because that's-
Yeah, it wasn't all the back country. If it was all the back country, I need a million dollars.
At least, and two more graders.
And, I mean, you can talk to the Forest Service, we don't need to do all the roads back there three times. Deadwood Summit, we go in, we'll do the big, everything back in Bear Valley, we come out, that's twice on the Deadwood Road. Johnson Creek, we usually go in, do the East Fort, come back up Johnson Creek, that's twice. But we, last year was just, it was a weird summer.
Johnson Creek gets a lot more traffic, I think, than we think.
What does?
Johnson Creek.
Oh, Johnson Creek gets hammered, and people don't do twenty-five miles an hour, they do fifty or sixty. They don't know how to put their vehicles in four-wheel drive coming up those steep hills, so they get the back end of their pickups chattering, and-
And did you ever get a bid, um, on that road, because what Lorena had brought in was not what was reality on the ground?
I got a bid from Wade, any back country road's two thousand dollars a mile.
And we've been told six hundred dollars a mile. Okay, so we need to look at budgeting purposes behind that, too, and that's-
That's what Wade charges Midas for doing from Yellow Pine to Stipnight, two thousand dollars a mile. And we get twenty-six hundred dollars a mile, so it's, it's doable if we make that money stay back there.
We need to look at that in your budget this year to make sure what we're doing.
That's, if you do Johnson Creek three times, that's six thousand dollars a mile. So, we gotta figure out, this year, we'll take care of it, unless I lose ten people, but Bruce, Bruce started back today, so-
Got him on desk duty?
No, his doctor's note says, "Do whatever you want until it hurts."
Wow!
He's a tough old boy.
He's a, he's a tough boy.
Yep, he'll let you know when he's-
He's lost a lot, he's lost forty-five pounds, he, his hat won't even fit his head, so he's, he's lost a lot of weight, but he's, he came back to work today.
Wow, good for him.
Yep, he can work until it hurts, but-
We'll watch him, just watch him, make sure he doesn't overdo.
Like most of us, it's, oh, it don't hurt that bad, but next morning, it's like, oh, what'd I do that for?
So, you got everything on farm-to-market cleaned up, 'cause you were getting hammered pretty hard on farm-to-market.
It was cleaned up before the road advisory meeting happened. Those were notes that somebody had-
What were the complaints on farm-to-market?
They weren't, the shoulders weren't taken back far enough, the road was too narrow.
It drifted in, and it, all the complaints were from that week of warm weather we got, and we were fighting to keep, keep the slush and stuff down, there was ruts in certain areas, and we pretty much had it, most of that stuff done before the advisory meeting even met.
They were questioning why the commissioners weren't there, and just for the record, we were at conference. So, we were, all three of us were out of the area, so we weren't at that meeting.
I didn't know, so-
So, do you have one this Wednesday?
No, actually, they're gonna go to every other month now, because they've done most of the recommendations, so our next one will be the first week of April.
Yeah, we're, we're starting to hammer out a lot of this stuff that we've been working on for a year, so.
The reason I bring that up is, have you guys approached them about helping you with maybe a new design for a shop out of Goldust?
I haven't talked to them about it.
Have you talked to Stretch or any of your guys to sit down and say, hey?
We've got a pretty good idea, that Lake Fork shop's pretty much it. But we'll make it actually one bay bigger, and the offices won't be hooked to the shop.
So, what we need to do is get some kinda schematics and design, and then get a cost of what it's gonna take to build it. We need those cost figures so that we can put all this together for the ARPA funds and some of this other funding that's available, so keep poking on that one if you can.
Yeah, it'll, it'll take a little bit, but I can find the plans for the shop up there. Basically, the office space that's in Lake Fork, if we make that another bay, another drive-through bay, that's pretty much what we're gonna be after. Then we gotta have a welding, separate welding shop.
Mm-hmm. And is there a well out at Goldust?
It, yeah, it serves the weed department.
The weed department, sure.
And I don't know, that water's nasty. That nasty.
Well, if we use that well, though, and just put a filtration system in it.
Something, yeah, or just get our, yeah, I don't know. Um, we'll have to do our own septic, 'cause the septic out there is only plumb for one, one bathroom.
Well, and Dale's got a really good filter system now for about seventeen, eighteen hundred bucks.
Who does?
Dale Bullwork.
Oh.
I don't know what his company's called, I'm not trying to promote him, but there's some really good systems out there for under two grand that work great.
Yeah.
That's what I mean.
We can just add on to the septic out there. You don't necessarily have to have a whole other one.
I don't know if you could add on, I don't know how those things work.
You can add on more drain fill to get more bedrooms.
Is that what it is?
Yeah. That would be, with, through the CUP process, they'd probably make you do that.
Right.
And I think that's something we need to concentrate on here pretty quick, and we can get some numbers together, and-
Hey, Elt, uh, just thinking about, we were talking about the Icola chipping contract potentially, is, when they did that in the past, do you know, did Icola bring a, a excavator in to pick that stuff up and move it around?
Brought in-
You just did the whole thing.
The whole thing and the truck, and they just spit it in the back of the truck.
It was, uh, Granite, Granite did it last time. That I, that I remember.
I've never heard of Granite doing it, it was all Jerry Icola. The year we did it, it was seventy-two thousand to do it, and it was half of this pile. This is, that's gonna be a big bill to do it.
My two cents on that would be buy a chipper, I know it's a lot of money up front, but when you get six truckloads of C and D material up there, whatever, you chip it. We used to have a, not we, but there used to be a full-time person that sat up there on that upper bench, made sure you dumped in the right spot, and watched you dump what you dumped.
That's kinda what we're talking about with Scott Carnes right now, too.
Yeah.
What would it cost to get back to that point?
We kinda slid on that, we need to get that, make sure that comes back.
Nobody's up there watching, they're gonna throw tires in there, they're gonna, they're just gonna throw whatever they got in the back of their pickup into the C and D, or the brush pile, or-
Yep.
And if there's no fine to do it, it's like, oh, well.
Just like Scott said, I mean, these back country dump sites, or transfer sites, the main reason those were put there is so the people that didn't pack it in, pack it out, wouldn't throw their stuff off the side of the road. If we close that, we're gonna have garbage all over the place. I mean, refrigerators and couches and mattresses and household garbage, and when I'm back there in the summertime, I see more vehicles with 1A plates with campers going down in there. And if somebody's back there paying attention, you could probably, it's like, oh, the refrigerator wasn't there until that vehicle came in. It's a free place for them to get rid of their stuff out of the valley, instead of paying fifty bucks to get rid of a refrigerator up at Hidden Springs, or wherever their dump site is up there.
Yep. Yep, and it's just amazing, people think that way, just haul it out in the woods and dump it, but-
Yeah. But if everything's, somebody told me that last time, they, Josh did some chipping up there sometime or another, and he'd, 'cause he, they did, uh, chipping out on West Roseberry Forest when we made the road through the trees out there, they chipped all that up, and did something, they must have hauled it down. They did something up the dump, and they either rented, or they bought a tub grinder. Well, they were loading it in, and a big sprocket off a D eight or something ended up in there.
Ruined it.
Yep, he said, "Never again."
And that'd be, be something, Dave, you might wanna consider, is have Josh take a look at it, too, maybe he'd wanna-
I don't know if he'll do that again.
I don't know if he will or not, but it's worth asking.
Worth a shot, I don't even know if he still has that tub grinder. But, yeah. Other than that, it's gonna be a lot of trips taking unchipped stuff down to Evergreen. There's no way you're gonna fill a truck up weight-wise.
No, you'll be really light.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if you did a side dump, you could do it, or an end dump, belly dump, you know, a big truck.
No, that's tub dump.
Yeah, you did, I don't know, there'd probably be twenty trips at least to that stuff.
More than that, that, that's, that pile is generally, it's just too bad we can't burn it, it just doesn't make sense to me, but-
Yeah, that's just, like, me and Scott were talking, it's all the laminates, the glues, particle board, plywood, OSB, it's illegal to burn that stuff.
I think we just need to start thinking longer term. We're making short-term decisions, we gotta figure out what that return is, and whatever we put our money into.
I mean, if you paid eighty thousand dollars to have that stuff chipped and hauled last time, what's a new chipper, three fifty? Something like that?
Until you run a big sprocket through it.
That's why you gotta have somebody sitting there with an excavator, picking it apart.
Paying attention and picking, instead of just grabbing a big wad, you're gonna have to pick it apart.
I think that, you know, I don't know, separate discussion, but I think we can get there.
But if you got your own chipper, you got somebody in a piece of equipment up there, knows what they're doing, you're not gonna wait till there's forty thousand tons of C and D up there, you're gonna get six or eight truckloads in, fire the chipper up, and throw it in there, and then let another dozen piles build up.
Yeah, and then it's two truckloads over to Evergreen instead of seventy.
And why not think regionally, if, if other people need the same type of a, of a chipper, you know, think of it on a regional basis.
That's where the Forest Service is interested in it. When they start talking about a regional level.
Really, we need like a private guy that just does that. But he's gotta have a market for that, when we sold it to Tammerack Mill, we got four dollars a ton.
Yeah.
It's like, you know, just need to pay the fuel for the excavator, let alone the rest of it.
Yep, pretty much.
But we got rid of it.
That, that's, that was the big thing, but once again, if you, if you're ready for it, when those trucks come in, you just do a couple, you know, when the pile gets half the size of this room, chip it. Another twenty truckloads come in, chip it, haul it off, don't, don't stockpile it, just keep it moving.
Well, and Scott Klingon has talked to DQ about, you know, we had plans to build this this year, or burn it, so can we go ahead and lease, and they said, "No." I mean, they've just flattened, no, twice now, so-
What we really need is a Habitat Humanity store, where the guys are donating some of that stuff instead of sending it all.
Oh, it's amazing what goes up there. I've been up there before, either for the county, or dropping myself, stuff off for myself, and there's eight-by-eight beams up there, there's glue lambs up there that are thirty feet long, and it's like-
And there's a lot of great-
My gosh!
Greenhouse products.
If we did, yeah.
If we could open that up for scroungers, half of that'd be gone.
Well, the last time we did that, it was a ten thousand dollar lawsuit that we had to pay.
That's just it, I mean, it's-
Like you said, no more.
Sign a piece of paper saying that, step on a nail, I'm not, not gonna sue ya. But there'd be people up there with chop saws and generators cutting that stuff up for firewood.
Maybe we need it at the road department.
Yeah, we could, yeah, no, it's gonna be steel.
There you go. All right, thank you, have a great day.
Thank you. You want a copy of this, Doug?
If you could just take it down to my office, just so they can scan it in.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that'd be great, and then you can take the originals, 'cause you might need the originals for the grant.
Okay. A word, thank you.
Ken, we got a minute or two, do you need to talk to us, you need to talk to him?
I was gonna say, are you after him or us?
All right. And we're gonna move on down our agenda. Our next item is, uh, this is commissioner discussion, we have an action item to set the, uh, first to approve the meeting minutes of February twenty-second, everybody get a chance to see those.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'd entertain a motion.
We'll make the motion that we approve the meeting, no, excuse me, meeting minutes of February twenty-second.
Second.
Moving in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And Doug, you got that changed?
Got it changed, just to reflect, Commissioner Chairman Asbrook would be contacting Representative Guestren to determine if he would be willing to-
And I'm also, if it's all right, you guys, I'm gonna CC and, uh, Megan Blakesma as well.
Perfect.
And two of both, I'll see if they'll return the call, I've got it kinda written, but I wanna make sure I could contact her, too, at the same time.
Perfect. And actually, maybe even put in, um, his last name's Bundy, what is it, Matt Bundy is actually the other representative from our district now, he's in Elmore County. He's running against Terry.
Good to know, I did not know that.
So, Matt Bundy is our new rep.
Who's our senator?
Uh, Megan.
Megan's a rep. She's a representative, she's not a senator.
She was in the Senate. She might be running for the Senate, then. I don't know who our senator is.
I don't either. Anyway, I'll do that, and then what I'll do is, um, send it out to them, and then I'll send you guys what the letter stated. And then we'll just wait and see if we get a return. Okay, our next agenda item is also next, and this is to set commissioner meeting dates for April, May, and June. And I haven't even looked at the calendar, so let's get to there. April, May, and June, we have four in April, five in May, and four in June. What?
By April, then, we've just got all the regular meetings, um, I think.
There's no holidays, is there?
No, May is, Memorial Day's the thirtieth, so we'll take that one off. And then June, there's just four.
Oh, yeah. Good catch, so, uh, the second, the ninth, sixteenth, and the twenty-third for May, take thirtieth off, and June has four Mondays. There's some interesting holidays.
It would be that June nineteenth holiday, though, the new one.
Mother's Day, Juneteenth is the nineteenth, but is the twentieth, is there anybody?
Oh, is that a federal holiday now?
Federal holiday.
So then we'd have to move that to the twenty-first. Right?
I don't know when it's observed, though. If it's observed on the Monday, or, I mean-
I would assume if it's on Sunday, it would be on the Monday.
On Monday, correct.
The twenty-first, then?
So, we'll move that one to... Okay, so I'll make a motion, then, that we set the meeting dates for April, the fourth, the eleventh, the eighteenth, and the twenty-fifth. For May would be the second, the ninth, the sixteenth, and the twenty-third, canceling the thirtieth. And for June would be the sixth, the thirteenth, the twenty-first, which is a Tuesday, and the twenty-seventh.
Oh, second.
Moving in second, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. So, at this time, unless there's any other discussion, anybody else have anything they wanna bring up?
Nope.
I will recess for lunch, and we'll see everyone back here at one o'clock.